We want to thank everybody for joining us. It's not typically this crowded on the third Monday of the month, so we appreciate everyone being here. Before we get into that, we will call the role of folks here. But while we are doing that, if we can go ahead and pop up the conduct of hearing that was up there just to give everybody the opportunity, who doesn't spend their third Monday of the month with us, the opportunity to look at that. And so with that, I'll adjourn you to call the role of commissioners.
Rebecca Fincher.
Present.
Laura King is absent. Drew Spurgers, I'm present. Alexander Baney.
Present.
Adam Bell. Mark Ferguson.
Present.
Letitia Sanders Jones.
Present.
Lori Quinn.
Here.
Ethan Reed.
Present.
And Jensen Tilke.
Here.
It appears we do have a quorum for any vote that is taken tonight. The staff can confirm this. It will require six votes for that vote to pass this evening. So it will require six commissioners to vote for that. So with that, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the May 15 meeting?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With that, the minutes pass. We will move to our first item, the variance review, which is a request for zoning variance to allow reduced lot depth for property at Robin Street. The floor agers, sir.
Good evening. This, as you said, is at 1709 Robin Street. It is roughly .15 acres, zoned R2. What they're wanting to do is split this lot into two, which would require a reduced lot depth from 100 feet to 85 feet for Lot 2, and a reduced front setback for the building located on Lot 2 from 25 feet to 20 feet. We took a look at this. The newly created lot will front Torreson Street, which is a dead end street. There are no plans to extend Torreson at this time. The reason they're needing the reduced lot depth is because there is a gazebo on the property to the north, which is attached via side paths to the home and to the garage. And so they're wanting to move that lot line in some. Based on everything we looked at, the square foot, 6,000 square foot minimum lot area will be met. We would recommend approval based on what we've looked at with the following conditions. The applicant shall be required to replat the property for the variance to become effective. And the variance shall only apply to a new lot created burning Torreson Street. The existing and remaining lot burning Robin Street shall meet all required minimum standards for the zoning district in accordance with the Conway zoning code and subdivision ordinance. Questions?
With that, this is the planning commission acting as the board of zoning adjustment. And so the applicant is not required to speak in favor of this, but certainly is welcome to if they would like. Please set your name and address just for the record.
Hey, I'm Megan. I'm with the Tyler Group, 240 Skyline Drive in Conway. I'm just speaking on behalf of the applicant. He's trying to split the lot for his family so he can keep the house to the south and then keep the, and sell the house to the north. He's got trains in it. That's the main reason for this, and he wants to keep the trains without having to move them. Yeah. And then I don't know if they had a plat on there, but I've got one if y'all need to see the gazebo or anything. Anybody need to see it?
No.
Are you good with the recommendations from staff? Any questions? Thank you. Anyone to speak in opposition? With that, I'll bring it back into commission for discussion.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alexander, second by Letitia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn that portion of the meeting.
So moved.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we will consider that portion of the meeting adjourned, and we will move to the planning commission meeting. So with that, we still need to go through the process. So Drew, will you call the role of planning commissioners, please?
Would love to. This feels familiar. Rebecca Fincher.
Present.
Laura King is absent. I am Drew Spurgers, and I am still here. Alexander Baney.
Present.
Adam Bell. Mark Ferguson.
Present.
Letitia Sanders Jones.
Present.
Lori Quinn. Ethan Reed.
Present.
Jensen Tilke.
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening. Once again, any vote taken in this portion of tonight's meeting will require six votes. And with that, if you've had an opportunity to look at the minutes, I will take a motion for that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alexander.
Second.
Second by Letitia. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motions, the minutes from May 15 stand approved. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we move into the public hearing item portion of our agenda. The Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations to the city council on public hearing items. Items reviewed on this agenda will be considered by the city council as early as July 11, 2023. Items not approved by the planning commission or board of zoning adjustment may be appealed to the city council within 30 days of the date of denial. With that, we will move to our first public hearing item, rezoning request.
It's me, Ian. You guys heard of this one last time. It's for Milestones. They were originally planning to try to rezone to S1. They are now attempting to rezone from R2A to R2. This fits in better with the zoning located in the neighborhood. Again, the school will still be there. This just allows them to develop in the future if a conditional use is passed. That ties to this rezoning. So we would recommend approval from rezoning this from R2A to R2. Are there any questions? Then I can get into the conditional use if this passes.
So just for clarification, we will only consider item B if item A passes this evening.
Correct.
Thank you. I think we're good. So before I open this up, just a housekeeping item. So the way that the process for this works is that we will ask for someone to speak in favor. We will allow three speakers on each side. The first speaker has 10 minutes. Each subsequent speaker has three minutes. Then that same process will work for the side for opposition. So if perhaps there is anyone here that there are multiple people to speak, we do ask that you coordinate your comments for the commission tonight for any item that we are going to hear. So with that, we will move into the, is the applicant here to speak in favor of this for item A? Please, as you're coming to the mic, please set your name and your address just for the record, please.
I'm Rick Salin, Salin Russell, Salin Architects. Used to be Salin Russell, 1315 North Street, Conway. We serve as the architect for Milestones. And we're sort of at the mercy of the plan commission here. We'll accept almost any zoning you guys want to approve for us, just so Milestones can continue with what they're doing. They've been there for many, many years and will continue to serve in that area. They'll continue to operate as they have. All we're doing is adding a very small office addition to the back of the property. Will be unseen from the street. It really won't change anything, won't add any traffic, won't add any additional personnel. At this point, we just simply want to build five little offices on the back of the building. So we, of course, are acceptable with change in zoning as long as it meets everybody's satisfaction. I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sal. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request?
I am Lisa Mabry-Williams. I live at 1717 Bruce Street. I sent a letter to Milestones and the planning, copied the planning commission and Milestones Board of Directors. I am opposed to this because the lights that Milestones currently has on the back of their building shine into our backyard, into our patio at night. I have been complaining to them for months. They are not in compliance with the lights for that zoning. They're unshielded. The lights hit us in the eyes when we should sit on our patio in the evenings. That's why I'm opposed to this. They won't come into compliance with that. Why should we give them a rezoning now?
Sir, are there any questions for Lisa? I think you're good for the moment. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition of this request? Yeah, come on up. Your name and your address just for the record, please.
My name is Russ Williams. I live at 1717 Bruce Street. I'm here to oppose this probably for different reasons than what most of my neighbors are opposing it. To understand my point of view, I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a retired research project analyst with the Arkansas Division of Workforce Services that specialized in multiple worksite reporters where I perform business analysis for these businesses. In that regard, from time to time, I would be able to work with the Arkansas Economic Development Commission in recruiting new companies into Arkansas or expanding their existing operations. Pardon me, I'm going to put on some glasses.
I understand.
While working with the Arkansas Economic Development Commission, there were always two questions that were asked of a company that were even thinking of coming to Arkansas or expanding their current operations. The two questions are, how is your business proposal going to enhance the benefits your company will provide to your client base should you decide to start or expand operations in Arkansas? And how will your client base be notified of the improvement to services and/or products your company will provide? Once any company has answered these two basic questions, serious work of entering or expanding the business with Arkansas would begin with a team dedicated to developing a strategy based on the answers provided. The question at the heart of the milestone need for the zoning change is this. How is the zoning change going to improve the outcomes provided to Milestones customers? Milestone is largely an educational provider. It is paramount that someone with an educational services background answer this fundamental question. How will changing from an R2A zoning to an R2 zoning improve the client's outcomes? If no improvement is realized by milestone clients, the zoning change is unproductive and unneeded. Secondly, as a resident of the neighborhood since 1986, it strikes me as unusual that the request is presented by an architectural firm. What reason does Rick Salin Associates have for promoting a zoning change for an educational institution? Are they concerned with the education services provided milestone clients, or is there some other reason? Although Milestones has operated successfully at this location for a number of years, suddenly a zoning change will improve their services. How? These are questions which this commission should consider before granting the request.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Before I bring this into commission, commissioners, are there any questions of anyone who has spoken this evening? All right, I'll bring this back into commission for discussion.
I like this better than the S1 we saw last time. I think it's a good compromise, so I'm willing to move it when we're ready.
Any other discussion? I feel the same, Adam.
So move to approve the request to rezone from R2A to R2.
Second.
The motion to Adam and the second to Lori tonight? Oh, Jensen wants it? Okay, Jensen, you can have the second. She might get the next one, though. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? With that, the motion passes, which will allow us to consider item B on our agenda tonight.
This is the conditional use permit for the same site at 1700 South Boulevard. What the conditional use permit is to allow is a childcare facility operating in the R2 zoning district. Took a look at it. I mean, to be in compliance, it would need this conditional use. So we would recommend approval with the following conditions. Operating hours are limited to Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Approved uses are limited to childcare facility and accompanying early intervention children's therapy programs, which are currently offered. Any changes to or expansions of the approved use shall require an amended or new conditional use permit. Any expansions or additions to the site, existing structures or outdoor play area may be subject to site development review in accordance with Article 10 of the Conway Zoning Code prior to the issuance of building permits. Any expansion or additions to the site, existing structures or outdoor play area shall be subject to approval by the Historic District Commission and issuance of a certificate of appropriateness prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number six, I've changed the wording just a little from what's shown there. All exterior existing and future lighting shall be inward downcast and shrouded to prevent light trespass onto adjacent property until comply with Article 10 Development Review Standards of the zoning code. Any new fencing shall comply with Article 10 Development Review Standards of the zoning code. Fencing type and placement shall be approved by the planning staff prior to installation. The property shall be replatted in accordance with the Conway subdivision ordinance prior to the issuance of any future building permits. No zoning variance required as a result of the commencement of this conditional use may be requested. The conditional use permit shall expire if the use ceases for a consecutive period of greater than 18 months, and any new signage shall be permitted and installed in accordance with Article 12 of the Conway Zoning Code and the old Conway Design Overlay District Guidelines. Are there any questions?
I'm not sure if the IT gods are listening, but I think there's a request to turn that microphone up or for anyone that speaks, maybe to get a hairbit closer. So I just will pass that on. So sorry for my delay in getting that done. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
He stepped out. I don't think he knew he was beat.
For those here, someone has to be here to speak in favor of this for us to consider it, or it causes other things. So just gonna have a little delay here. Can somebody just text for Exile and tell him to come back with this many people? Somebody has his phone number. Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, I know, but I just.
So it can be anybody.
Would anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Thank you, Mr. Andy.
My name is Andy Hawkins, 405 Louise Lane. I'm speaking in favor of this particular item.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this request tonight? Is there anyone that? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this?
I just want, I have a question.
Yeah.
Again, they have not brought their lights into compliance for years, and we have been there since 86. This is affecting our quality of light. The lights are not supposed to be on after operating hours. Those lights are on in the back 24/7. They're on all night long. When Ruth Castleberry was the director, all I had to do was contact Ruth, and she'd take care of these problems. And it's been an ongoing problem with Milestones. I have been told, well, the contractors didn't install the lights very well, but they didn't fix them. And this is affecting our quality of life, and we are homeowners. And this is where we choose to live, and I want this problem fixed.
I think that's a fair request. I was gonna, I thought you might ask about this. Does number six address your concerns? Can we pop that up there for her? I don't know if she can, I can't see that far. Do you need to?
It doesn't say anything about the hours. And Milestones does not operate at night.
Go ahead.
Well, I just didn't know if there were issues with the safety issues at night to have it lit up in the back or anything. I mean.
The children aren't there at night.
I think it's more for security measures.
And they're affecting my backyard.
Well, and we're hopeful by this that they will turn them away from your property. I mean, that's how I'm reading this.
What I read in the zoning code is they should not be on all night long. That's in violation of the zoning code. If they're having a problem with security, they need some motion sensor lights that will come on at night. And, you know, that are motion sensors like most people have on their homes.
If we make this restriction and they don't comply, it would be a code enforcement issue at which they could be fined correctly.
If it's a zoning, if it's a zoning code violation, then that would be the Code Enforcement Division. We can contact them and verify that they come into code compliance. Madam Chair, I just wanted to briefly be recognized. After the speaker, we will need a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Hawkins to speak on behalf of the applicant. The bylaws for the planning commission require that the applicant be the individual that speaks on behalf of the project.
Of course we do. We'll get that taken care of. So yes, got that. Thank you. So any other questions?
Well, I was just gonna ask, was number one, is there a way that that can be reworded? Where one and six kind of go together? Or is that just not in Article 10 where, are there no hours listed in that? Not, I didn't.
This is a conditional use permit that you can require conditions of approval beyond what's listed here. You would have to amend that either before the motion is made, or you can discuss that after the motion is made. It's typically done before the motion is made, and you would have to incorporate that with your motion. If it's something that's already a code requirement, those will, those can be enforced by alternative methods. So we would look at those separately.
I feel like you need an easy access button to, if this is not in code, who you call to get this rectified. I think that that would probably address your issue. I don't know that this commission is gonna address your issue, but I think giving you some access to somebody to talk to when those lights are shining in your yard.
Well, I think if this was tacked on to the conditional use, that the lights go off after 5:00 p.m. or that they're motion sensor lights only, that'll address my issue. That way, they won't be shining on my patio at night.
If they're exterior lights, so they come on when it gets dark out, so they wouldn't be on during the day. So if it was something, lights come, lights go off after 5:00, that doesn't really. But the motion sensor lights makes sense. I mean, but that doesn't really sound like a, an argument to go against this.
Is there anything else you want to add to your?
No, but only that I am a homeowner, and this is our home, and they are affecting the quality of our lives.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Okay. Before we go back and do a motion to suspend the rules, did Rick? No, okay. All right. Before I bring this back into commission, can I get a motion from a commissioner to suspend the rules for the applicant to speak on behalf, allowing Mr. Hawkins, who spoke, to speak on behalf of the applicant?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All those in favor to allow what happened to have actually happened, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Are you happy? Okay, thank you. Perfect. I'll bring this.
Is that better?
Is that better? Yes, it's great. Thank you. I will now bring this into commission for discussion regarding item B on the planning commission agenda. So commissioners, what say you?
Yeah, I support the motion and the recommendations as is. I think item number six is a step in the right direction towards fixing the law. I think item number six is a step in the right direction towards fixing the light issue. And if we start adjusting things at that level, we're gonna be in trouble in future meetings. So.
Agreed. I'm with Adam. I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion from Alexander, a second from Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the motion passes. With that, we'll move to our, our last item on the agenda. The request to rezone 11.6 acres at the end, at the east, located east of Paget Road.
I'll be taking this item, Madam Chair.
Are you gonna do it from here or from?
I can do it from here.
No, I'm good with you.
If you want me to go up.
All right. So Chris is gonna take this item for us. So, Chris?
Madam Chair, this is a site that is to the east side of Paget Road, at the Spencer Lake Drive and Paget Road intersection. It's an approximately 11.6 acre rezone request, which will be a request to rezone to a PUD from an A1 agricultural. The comprehensive plan for this location indicates single-family. Projected traffic impact with a rezoned, with a rezoning to a PUD and developed at this property, proposed density of 63 units, the development would generate an estimated 461 vehicle trips per day weekday. Current traffic counts is 970 Paget Road, North Paget Road, and Prince, at the North Paget Road and Prince Street intersection, 760 for the Bay Hill Drive, west of Bay Hill Drive and Hogan Lane intersection. The applicant's proposing approximately a 1.25 acre lot is being dedicated as a detention basin in an area known to back water up from, from the lake. Drainage calculations and design is a part of the preliminary plat process beyond the rezoning of the property. The applicant will be required to meet the City of Conway's drainage criteria manual requirements and other federal, state, and local laws and ordinances upon design of the facilities. The master street plan indicates that Paget Road is designated as a minor arterial. The proposal includes an interior minor street network with a future street extension to the northeast of the development. Street improvements will be subject to application of the City of Conway codes during the preliminary plat development of this site. Preliminary development will be, will be the internal street network. Excuse me, primary development. Staff comments, the applicant was required to present the proposed planned unit development concept to the public at a public information meeting that was held on April the 27th of 2023. Eighty-four of the people in attendance indicated opposition to initial version of this proposal, which included 144 multifamily units, including 27 five-plex and three triplex structures. The primary concerns at that time were related to drainage, wildlife compatibility with surroundings, neighborhoods, property values of surrounding neighborhoods, and traffic. Approximately 50% of those in attendance at the April 27th meeting indicated that a development density closer to the standard R1 requirements would be more appropriate. The applicant agreed to modify the proposal to address concerns from the community and agreed to a second meeting with the interested parties. The meeting, the second meeting was held on May 25th, 2023, with 33 people present, 31 of which indicated opposition to the revised proposal. The applicant revised the proposal to create a single-family subdivision design, which is more compatible with the comprehensive plan, increased the detention area to accommodate concerns regarding water quality, drainage, and environmental considerations related to the lake, included a future stubout to the north to provide future traffic routes other than Paget Road, reserved a larger lot, 0.58 acre, at the front of the subdivision to echo larger lot sizes to the west, and provided a pedestrian walkway to the north to allow students of Woodrow, Woodrow Cummins Elementary to use sidewalks further away from Paget Road. The applicant conducted the second meeting as a Q and A between the applicant and the audience. Concerns included water quality of the lake, detention, trash, sizes of homes, sizes of lots, the safety of the detention pond in proximity to the school, the size of the parking area in front of homes, on-street parking, and traffic. The applicant met with staff following the May 25th meeting and agreed to increase the distance between the back of the sidewalk and the front of garages to 20 feet to better accommodate parking, and agreed to include a safety bench around the detention pond to increase safety at the drainage facility. The proposal appears to meet the comprehensive plan at this location and demonstrates terrain hardship requirements that are considered for a planned unit development submission. The applicant has made multiple revisions to decrease density and align with the comprehensive plan and adjustments to consider, and adjustments to consider public input. Staff recommends approval of the request with consideration of the following conditions. Recommended PUD development plan conditions include: One, the PUD should, should be used for single-family residential only. Two, all standards and uses other than those defined by the development plan shall be governed by restrictions of the R1 zoning district standard. Excuse me, R1 zoning district. Three, the distance between the back of the sidewalk and the garage shall be no less than 20 feet. Four, the detention pond shall include a safety bench or an alternate method agreed upon by the city engineer and the applicant to improve safety considerations at the detention pond. Five, buildings shall be of the following materials: brick, stone, cyber, excuse me, cement fiber board, hardy siding, wood, other materials as approved by the planning director. Number six, vinyl siding shall be prohibited. Seven, roofs shall have a pitch of eight over 12 or greater. Porches may have lesser pitch. Eight, roof shall only, shall be only of architectural shingles. Nine, no residential accessory structures shall be permitted on lots 1 through 62. Ten, no fences in excess of four feet high shall be permitted in front yards. Any proposed fencing shall be approved by the planning director. Eleven, five-foot sidewalks shall be required along both sides of the internal streets and link to existing sidewalks along Paget Road as shown on the site plan. Twelve, a paved side path must be installed connecting the development to the adjacent school to the north. Thirteen, the PUD shall be generally developed per the density and intent indicated on the site plan. Minor variations from the approved plan may be allowed by approval from the planning director. Fourteen, plating shall be required. Any additional rights of ways, sidewalks, et cetera, as required by the subdivision ordinance, shall be dedicated and constructed. Fifteen, lot 63 shall be labeled as unbuildable. Number sixteen, setbacks shall be as follows: front, 15 feet; interior, 5 feet; exterior, 15 feet; rear, 17.5 feet. Additional details such as utility and pedestrian easements, public right-of-way, et cetera, shall be defined in the final development plan, plat, and PUD documents.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Chris?
Not at this time.
That will open it up to public hearing. Is the applicant present to speak in favor of this? Please state your name and address for the record.
Landon Sanders. I'm at 306 Salem Roads, Suite 106 in Conway. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Paxton did a great job summarizing this, this project and what we've done. After two public information meetings and a meeting with the city, we have reduced the density dramatically and completely changed this project to try to address the concerns of the neighbors. We went from a highly dense townhome project to a single-family detached project that's on y'all's screen down here. We have addressed traffic and safety concerns and went from two curb cuts to one and, and provided a walk, walking path there to the north that will go from the, from that northern round, the road there to the Woodrow Cummins Elementary School that's to the north of this project. And we have done everything we can to address all these traffic and safety issues, to address wetland issues, all kinds of issues that have been brought up by the neighbors. So, as Mr. Paxton said, we've got a detention or retention pond area there with a safety bench or other appropriate mechanism for safety purposes that can be provided there. And there's a sixth of an acre out parcel that will kind of provide a buffer between this more dense project to the Paget project right, or Paget Road there. But other than that, Mr. Paxton did a great job. I'm here to answer questions. I would point out that this project is actually less dense in the maximum, than the maximum units per acre that will be allowed under R1. So, I believe this is consistent with the comprehensive growth plan. I think it's less dense than R1 would, than would be permitted by R1 on a perfect piece of property. So, I'm here for questions if you guys have them.
Could you provide some details on the optional pocket park deeded to the city?
Yeah, that, that was discussed with the city. So, if, if we were gonna deed that to the city, that would be just something that, that the city could, that we could put in there. As far as like what that is, I'll defer that to Mr. Paxton or Mr. Pennington. But that would be a part of that detention pond area right there to the northwest, that big 1.25 acres or whatever it would be.
Can I ask you to uncomfortably speak a little closer to the microphone? I think they've got it turned up as loud as they can.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So, did y'all hear that? So, pocket park on that northwest parcel there, and that is where the detention pond is. As far as what would go there, I mean, that would be between the city and the developer. That was just discussed with the city as a possible option. And if that's something the city wants to do, then that's something we would do.
Yes, Madam Chair, that, that was a part of a discussion. That is a possibility. It would still be contingent on approval of being deeded over to the city and we would have additional conversations with that during the preliminary plat process. It was included in the, this portion of the project as more of as a reference for in the future.
What other questions do you guys have?
So, can you give me some more detail on what you mean by this PUD would be less dense than R1? Because the lot size is smaller, so.
Yep, I sure can. Yes, the lot size is smaller. Like I said, if there was a perfect piece of property, if you do the math on it, R1 requires 6,000 square foot lots. There's 43,560 square feet in an acre. That is 7.26 units an acre. And this rounds out at about 5.76. And so, because there's only 10.9 develop, like developmental acreage there. And so, if we did it by 11.6 acres, which is what we have it listed here, it'd actually be higher than, a lower density than that. So, this is 5.76 in a perfect piece of property. 7.26 would be under R1. But due to the terrain here and the unique topography of this project, that is not doable. And so, as far as like doing R1, and there's other reasons. If you guys have read our, our letter from the developer to the, to the planning department, there's reasons in there for that as well. And that's attached in y'all's booklet.
So, so have you have that engineered, like drawn out as an R1? Because I've asked this question, and I can't seem to get.
No, we, we have not.
An answer with regard to roads, infrastructure, and other detention as related to R1.
Yeah.
And so, the answer that I get from the planning staff is that it would be less units. But that's not what I'm hearing from you. So you seem to have a different belief. So help me reconcile that.
You're asking me if we've had it planted as R1?
Well, I'm just asking how, how it would be less dense, because that's, I'm with Adam. That's the thing I can't reconcile.
It's just the math. You know, you take the maximum square footage of, of an acre divided by the maximum square footage of, of an R1 property, which is 6,000 square feet, that's 7.26 units an acre. And these units are typically about 4290, I believe. And that would, if you do that times 10.93, which is the area that could be developed here, that would be 5.76 units an acre.
So, are, but are you taking into account that lot 63, which is stated here, is unbuildable in, in the math?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if that is, is that part of that, John? Yes, it is. Yep. Part of it.
I have a question. You mentioned you, I know we all received all of the emails from the public, and a lot of the questions had to do with the lake. And you mentioned you've addressed wetland issues and things like that. So what, what have you addressed and what, who have you discussed that with?
Yep, we did a preliminary wetland review that identified wetlands. And that was something that I'm glad the neighbors brought up, something that we hadn't addressed. And that is going to have to be discussed between the developer and the Corps of Engineers and the EPA. And he's gonna have to follow all city, state, and federal guidelines for wetlands. So, that will either mean preserving or mitigating wetlands. And that is a months-long permitting process that is going to be a fluid process. I can't give you an answer as to what that's gonna look like, other than it can't be anything of a higher use than this. I mean, it's just gonna have to, he's gonna have to comply with the, with the federal regulations as to wetlands.
And also in regard, the other part of that is the 1.25 acre detention basin.
Yep.
Currently, I'm very familiar with the area, the, the culverts or whatever that go under the road that flow back and forth into the lake, like the runoff from the subdivision. Will the, will it still backflow into the lake? I mean, will that still be?
Yeah, that's been a question that's been asked. And yeah, I mean, the, the water will be coming from the lake and, and into this pond. And the bigger question is, you know, I, I think that the neighbors have had concerns about chemicals and trash. Sounds like they've already had a problem with chemicals and trash. We heard them talk about the lake has deteriorated, and they pick up buckets and buckets of trash already. So, it's not our job, it's, we're not wanting to make it dirtier. We're wanting to make it better. But as far as like, the big thing right now is we want to make sure it's safe. And that's why we provided that, that safety ledge. And that was something the city, I mean, me and Mr. Paxton discussed. And that could be an option, that or something else to make it a little bit safer for the neighbors and, and children. But as far as the water, yeah, it's, it's gonna be going between Spencer Lake and that pond. Just as it is now. But it'll be different. It'll have to be.
There won't be, right.
Yeah, it's just gonna have, it's gonna have to go, go through the, the city's drainage manual criteria, I believe. It's gonna have to comply with all of that. So, Mr. Paxton might be able to elaborate on that.
Yes, Madam Chair, the, after this, this is a rezone. So, after this goes through the rezone process, it still has to go through a rigorous review process. And part of that process is to go through our drainage criteria manual. They'll submit a drainage report. They will submit any of their additional requirements that are associated with our engineering requirements that are listed within our drainage criteria manual. They'll have to meet the minimum standards of the City of Conway's drainage code.
Thank you for that, Chris. Are there any other questions?
Go ahead.
You go ahead. Hit it.
So, the, on page 20, which I, I believe, and maybe this is the initial question for staff. So, you know, I know staff's recommending this, page 20 through 24, 25 here. Has that, is that vetted by y'all, or is that all, is every bit of that applicant submitted?
We receive the, excuse me, Madam Chair.
You're good. Go ahead.
We do receive a, a letter of justification, a letter of interest from the, from the representative. The pages that are labeled on, starting on page 20, that says one of five, those are applicants submitted. This is essentially the, will detail, there's portions of it that will detail the requirements that they will have to follow with the PUD. However, this is all information that comes directly from the applicant. So, this being a part of your staff report does not necessarily indicate staff agrees with each portion of this. There is a lot of information in here that does not pertain to staff's determination of a recommendation of approval. Just because it's in this request letter does not make it a part of staff's recommendation of approval. This is simply what they had submitted to us with their letter of recommendation.
The short answer to that is not vetted.
Yeah, Mr. Bell, that was prepared by our developer. And primarily, all those issues were issues that were brought up in the public information meetings. And so, those were why, that's why we addressed those issues in there. Others just more statistics and restrictions on the property.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Not at this time.
To be fair, I think you spoke for two or three minutes, and then we got into the question portion. Is there anything, you, you still have just a little bit of time if there's anything you want to add. I want to be fair to you.
No, I, I don't really have anything else to add. Mr. Paxton, like I said, did a great job. I'd just like to point out that, you know, this is a PUD, which is to accomplish zoning that traditional zoning otherwise wouldn't be capable of accomplishing. And that's what we're doing here. We're providing a different type of housing, variety of housing. We're providing a different type of housing, variety of housing on the west side of town that otherwise isn't there. So just be mindful of that. And I appreciate you all of your time listening to us. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this? All right, seeing none, we will move to the opposition. So is there anyone to speak in opposition? Just as a reminder, the first speaker has 10 minutes. The two subsequent speakers have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please. We won't start your timer until you get your hand out then.
Good. Kevin Leach, 1505 Warwick Hills Lane. I know this isn't supposed to be just based on if it's going to be rental or new families or retirees downsizing. But when they I put the article in the paper yesterday, the Democratic Gazette, Mr. Pennington was quoted, "We believe our community, what is to thrive adequate housing should be available for all walks of life," Pennington said. "This includes our target market of young professionals downsizing retirees, families who desire children to have convenient access to schools. Ivory Ridge seeks to address all of these groups by offering smaller square footage in a highly sought-after area. To achieve this goal, density per acre must be must increase for the economics of this project. The proposed development is approved, if approved, will allow for the contracting of 62 family detached lots." Okay? So, I mean, don't get me wrong, this is brilliant. If I was trying to make money, I would do it too. Okay? Mr. Pennington did a PUD in 2021, and I would like y'all to see how many of those were sold to retirees downsizing? Zero. How many were sold to single families? Zero. There are 32 of them built, and 32 of them are owned by Mr. Pennington. Is that correct? Okay, it says 32, but maybe it's 30. And they're all owned by you, correct? Okay. Penny's LLC, which is owned by John Pennington, as you can see on the front page, agent, incorporator, organizer, tax repair. Oh, it's not sorry, his tax repair was Michelle Phillips. You get this all off of internet, ArkansasDaddy.com, wherever. So I own 23 rental properties, just to be fair. So I don't want you to think that I think tenants are bad because they're some of the best people in the in the city. But I'm going to tell you, if he built 32, he owns 32, he's going to own 63 more. Okay? And the pictures I took here are of his PUD over there, and there's about maybe eight to 12 feet in between the backyards. Is that correct?
Hey, Kevin, you'll have to keep your comments to the commission tonight.
Okay, I just thought maybe y'all would want me to ask him because I don't know for sure. Because I don't want to get on his property. But my question is, do you really think a new family is going to go in and not have a backyard if they're going to have kids? All right? That's one of my things. If you look at most of the backyards, they're about two or three feet, and they're fenced in. That is not going to fit with what's over there already. These people saved their whole lives and bought five acre lots and built on this house, built on these lots. Okay? Not just saying that it's based on their price going down or whatever, but I had 22 houses that I bought from Pam McDowell Brooks or that we developed over on Wineberry. Okay? One night, one of my tenants had a heart attack. All right? When you get properties and there's not enough room, we had two-car garages, driveways where you could park three or four cars, and the emergency vehicle couldn't get down the street because they're parked on the street. And they had to drive through the yard. There's no yard here for them to drive through. I mean, if you look on the the second page, that truck right there is pulled about this far from his garage door, and his tailgate is still hanging over the curb. If you look on the third page, that's why I'm bringing this up, there's a truck parked there. This is at 1:30 this afternoon. There's a truck there. The next car couldn't get in because if you don't drive and park exactly over on this side of it, the other car can't get in. And there's another car parked there. This is at 1:30 in the afternoon. What do you think it's going to be? At 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night? You know, so the runoff from these streets, from you put all this concrete over there with the with the new subdivision going in, like I live over on Warwick, on Tyler, we haven't addressed the streets over there. I think they're finally starting to do it. But I've been there for seven years. They told me it would be repaved, redone to take the traffic over there and and allow for the traffic, and it still hasn't been done. I called the city a couple of weeks ago, and they said it might be two more years. Well, now I think they maybe had maybe have changed their mind, but there's not there's no way that that they can accommodate all this extra traffic. And this is too dense around a school, you know? So I said, what he's doing is brilliant if you if you're trying to make money. I get it because he found a loophole in the zoning or the whatever from the lot and was able to get this this passed or get it at least a meeting. Okay? So I'd like to ask, who here is in opposition of this? And how many are in favor of this? And I just, you know, I think there's plenty of places in Conway where this could be. And it's, you know, if it was really for this, there wouldn't have been zero of 32 or zero of 30 sold. So this right here is just a statement to kind of appease what was going on. And what it what they did before was pretty brilliant, too. If you come in, you say I'm going to do 133 of these, and you go back to 52% before we even had had a discussion that night, they'd already said, hey, we're going to revise this. We know it's not going to work. It kind of stinks a little bit. You know, the last meeting, I think everybody was a little bit disappointed in the numbers that showed up to oppose it, but you did it on a Thursday before Memorial Day, where people are already headed to the lake. You know, everybody's going to take a four-day weekend. And I think you can say tonight that people are still pretty much in opposition of this. And so I just, I don't know. Have y'all had any emails in favor of this, or has everything been opposed?
Are there any questions for Kevin on this? Got about two and a half minutes left. Are you good?
I'm good. I just, you know, I hope this won't pass. I mean, there's lots and lots of people that this affects. So thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition?
I feel like I don't need to explain the rules to you this evening, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Commissioners.
Would you like your chair back?
Great question. Brandon Rule, 5720 Brush Creek Loop. Appreciate all of you and your positions and your volunteering of your time. I've done my tenure behind that bench, and I know you have a challenging decision to make this evening. In my professional capacity as an architect, you know, I look at these cases day in and day out for my clients, and simply put, I don't think it's appropriate. Also, as a representative for the Spencer Mountain POA, we also disagree and don't think it's appropriate. All of the reasoning is behind, you know, all the same comments that we've been through already. There was some some excellent questions that you guys brought up just a minute ago, one of which regarding the R1 zoning possibility. So in a perfect world, you can get that many units. What was it, 7.26 per acre? If you've got a perfect piece of property that'll allow you to put in the roads, put in the easements, put in all the additional things that you need. So typically, getting to that number, you've kind of have more property than what that'll allow. So the fact of the matter is, this is being requested as a PUD because the applicant cannot get the number of units that they need to put in there to get their return on investment. This could be a R1 application. This could be a simple single road with a cul-de-sac at the end and maybe 25 to 30 lots. It's feasible for that to fit. It's just not as good of a number of of units, like Kevin was saying. You know, had this piece of property been larger north to south, and then they could probably fit the loop road in there and get the required setbacks and things that are needed. But because of the size of the property and the amount of drainage that is traversing the property that's going to have to be dealt with, they're asking for this PUD and to maximize the number of units. Also, a great question regarding the the trueness of that that letter that was included in your packet. I just looked up one of those PUDs, the one that's just adjacent to this property that's actually not built, Spencer Mountain Condos. That property was approved at 30 units over 8.62 acres, which is actually 3.48 units per acre. And then there was a subsequent phase that was also approved but never built, which was nine units over 2.51 acres. So that's 3.58. So in any event, you know, it's not built, but there's, you know, it's hard to believe the truthfulness and the rest of those those figures. I didn't pull any of the other ones to check, but that was the closest one, so I just looked at it really quickly. So again, like, like I said, this is just too dense, and that's basically what it boils down to. You guys are making decisions about the use of the land. Thank you.
Hang on just a second. We may have questions for you. You don't get off that easy. Does anyone have questions for Brandon this evening?
Not yet.
I do have a question on this, this, the question that Adam and I both asked, because I think it's an important one about the comment that is the current request is less dense than the maximum units in R1. And I think that you were trying to address that, and you got into that. And so when I've asked this this question to the staff, certainly it would be less dense in R1, but I can't get an exact amount, number of lots that would be sold, that sort of thing. R1 lots require 6,000 acres. The current requests require 4290. Simple math tells me that that would be less units. Can you help us understand that?
So, yeah, it is less units. But again, if if it would have to be a perfect piece of property, right? Like I was saying, if that was larger north to south, then there would be enough room for the roads to be implemented in there. Currently, we have to ask, or he is having to ask for, you know, reduced setbacks and smaller lots because he doesn't have the area to accommodate the R1. There would need to be, you know, you can't just fill up an entire property without roadways, easements, utility easements, drainage easements. There's a plethora of parameters that would fall effect on the property that would diminish that number. If that makes sense.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition of this request?
Stuart McConnell, 5725 Brush Creek Loop. My family and I have owned the property across the street from where this development is wanting to happen. And we've got, of course, I put in Spencer Lake subdivision, and the lake obviously is is ours. I don't know if y'all are aware of what's happening at Conway, Lake Conway. If you've heard about what's what they're doing and what's happened and what and why it's happening. They've had a lot of silt and runoff in Lake Conway, and they got a five-year plan to to drain the lake and rework it, redo it, do a lot of pretty big, pretty big project. Of course, they have the gaming fish and the government money backing their project where our lake, with the runoff we've had, I'm going to say within the last 10 years. And we've we've owned this property and this lake since 1981. And probably within the last 10 years, with centennials growth and other developments, the the shallowest part of our lake was probably waist-high on me. And now it's probably ankle-deep with all the silt that's running there. And it's the same thing that's happened in Lake Conway. And but the difference, like I said, is they've got gaming fish and the government money to back them where I have only our family money, once it's, once it's filled in, that we'll have to, we'll have to do something about. And not only that, it's going to, it's, it's, it can cause flooding. I've got, you just have to see it, but I've, it's so much, so much silt and and trash has got into that that it's, it's really gotten out of hand, and it's going to eventually this property, the lake, and you're not probably familiar with it, but the lake where it dumps into the spillway that runs to the river. And so one, once that lake gets so high that it's a shallow end, which is up where this development is going to happen, if it does, that's, that's getting higher and higher, and it's going to cause some flooding in other places. So it's a big concern for our family for, you know, and I, you know, just with, and I know that they've said they're going by the state and city regulations on what they're going to do to prevent wastewater and trash getting in the lake. They all say that. And look where I am as an owner. And so, you know, we'd like to keep this. I know my time's up. We'd like to keep this thing as pretty and as nice as we can, as long as we can, and and not have to do that.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So it has been shared with me that the applicant has requested a rebuttal. And it has been quite a while since you've received quite a bit of comment this evening. You did not use all of your time. I am in agreement to allow three minutes for for you to to reply to that if you would like. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
John Pennington, 306 Salem Road. I'm managed member of Nichols LLC, which is the applicant. I will address Mr. Leach first. He provided this handout. He was referring to Marvin Gardens subdivision, which is owned by Penny's LLC. That is in our rental portfolio. We have 30 houses in there. And one of the, I guess, problems that I had once that subdivision was developed was the setbacks were not big enough. I even shared this with staff when we came in to meet. The front setbacks are seven and a half, and the rear setbacks were 12 and a half, I think. I'm doing that from memory. So once that was built, city sanitation, transportation department required a drainage swell in the back of those houses, the majority of the houses, which took up even more space out of the backyard. So that I will agree that those backyards are not very large, and they actually are smaller than I ever intended them to be. Addressing this particular project, we are asking for larger setbacks than what we asked for in Marvin Gardens. This is a 17 and a half-foot setback in the in the rear. And I believe the the current on your sheet, it showed 15, which I think originally I had asked for a little bit less than that, which is 12 and a half. But if 15 is fine, then 15 is acceptable to us. So the yards are not the same as Marvin Gardens. They are different. As far as our target market, that goes to whether it's ownership or rental or whatever, it doesn't really come into play when you're dealing with land use. Really, the decision before this body and then further the council is, is this appropriate use for the land? And I know it is a unique situation with the PUD and the reduced setbacks, but this is not setting a precedent. There is a development on Erby that was done by Mr. Watson. It has reduced setbacks. Marvin Gardens have reduced setbacks. Bell Valley Phase 5, Mr. Shaw spoke to y'all a couple of months ago. It has reduced setbacks. So what you're seeing from a developer's perspective is if we're going to try to provide more affordable housing, which is a smaller unit in town, you're going to have to start seeing some of these reduced setbacks. That's just how the economics play out. I mean, we, that's just it. That's just, that's really the basis of this project. So I just wanted to address that directly. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions from the commission?
I do have a question with regard to the staff recommendations and the 1 through 16. I assume that you've read them. Are you in agreement with all of those?
Yes, yes, definitely. Yeah, we agree to all of those.
Any other questions? Thank you. So with that, I will bring it back into commission for discussion. I think that this deserves the thoughtful consideration of the commission, and I certainly want us to give it due diligence this evening. I will just tell the commissioners, we will take a voice vote on this one. What say you, commissioners?
I'll go first. So I definitely want to hear what everybody else has to say. And I also want to say I appreciate all the comments that were made. I certainly got nervous when I walked in here that we were going to have a chaotic meeting and thank everybody who used their time very well. So that's great. But after hearing it all, I'm definitely against it. I very much respect staff's recommendation, and I put a lot of weight into their recommendation. But this one's different. It boils down to a couple of reasons for me. One, been on the commission two years. We've made a lot of important impactful decisions, and we've never seen feedback and concern and pushback like this. The room's been full, but not this full, not to mention the hundreds of emails we've gotten over the past few months. That alone is certainly no reason to vote no. We have made plenty of unpopular decisions on this group, some recently. But when you pair that with what I feel are valid points about the lake, the potential wetlands, the proximity to Woodrow Cummins, the safety concerns that are there, the increased density, it's just, it's not something that I feel we should be supporting. So that's where I'm at on it, but certainly want to hear where everybody else is.
Thanks, Adam.
Let me go.
Your turn.
Yeah, I agree with Adam on that. It's just kind of to the point to where it looks like all of it is A1 over there. I'm not sure how far that goes out, but once, you know, one domino falls, the rest will fall with it. When will it stop with this? I'm not really sure the, what was mentioned, that they got past a restriction. I'm not sure what that is, but it seems like that just, this would make the west side of Conway kind of going towards a bad direction. So R1 right there would be great, but yeah, this just, it seems like it's just not in the right location for it.
I'll go.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
First about your comment. When you said make West Conway go bad, can you clarify that? Are you talking about density of the?
I'm talking about just right there next to the schools. When the density of this gets passed, I mean, right around the schools, when will it stop with it? So that's kind of what worries me. You know, I've been over there and stuff, and it's mostly just larger lots and stuff, and it just seems out of place for me. You know, if this was something off of Dave Ward Drive, sure, fine. But just over there, it just seems, it seems like this will open the gates for more of this. And I just don't think that's the appropriate area.
It's a good question, Letitia. Did you feel like you had your answer? Lori?
Agree with Adam. I just, obviously, I agree with Kevin Leach. This is a great plan. I just don't think this is the right spot for it. And my concerns are a little different. And two, I want to say two positive things. I think the revision of the plan was much better. I think single-family is, I don't think any of us would have considered anything else. But I did some research too in the surrounding neighborhoods with lot sizes and even similar homes with 1,300 square feet. There is nothing over there with that lot size. So I still feel the density is, it's too much. And then beyond that, my concern is the lake, because I don't feel like we've gotten clear answers on anyone with knowledge who may have done some research on what 60 homes draining into that. And again, I even drove back out there. And just so you all know, the public, we read all of your emails and we drive to sites and we look at things. And so, and when you see us up here, we're not using our phone for other reasons. We have notes in our phone. We have different things we're looking at. But I did take notes so I would remember, you know, everything to say. But the Spencer Lake situation to me is a big concern, and I feel like it has been asked and re-asked by the public. And then I don't feel like we've had any expert, unless I'm missing it in the response. We have not had an expert opinion on what the increase of drainage. And again, when you drive over that, it's clear to see it's going to flow back and forth. Unless, then that's why I asked the question. Is it, is it going to be moved somewhere different or will it drain into there? And I, I think the concerns we've already heard with what is happening, I'm just, I'm not comfortable. I want growth for our city. I want development, and I want new homes. We need them. I sell them. I want us to have new homes in this city because I know people are waiting and wanting homes. So I kind of come from a different opinion. I would want this if it was the right fit, but I just don't think this is the right fit. And again, looking at Chestnut Meadows, Brownstone, and Sterling Court, who all have properties of similar square footage, I just think we are making a big jump decreasing the square footage of the lot size. You know, so that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Lori. I also appreciate your comments about the cell phone. Yes, just so everybody knows, we get the packets emailed to us, right? They're not delivered to our homes anymore on our doorsteps. So for, so we have to reference that this way. I still get my paper, but nonetheless, okay. Anybody else?
I know.
I do have a question for you, Chris. So on the last PUD that we approved, reduced setback, last month, I believe, remind me how those lots compare in size to these lots?
So these lots, I believe, are 55 by 78. So 55 by 78, the previous approval was, I believe, 5,500 square foot, excuse me, yes, 5,500 square foot lots, approximately the majority of them were. They varied in sizes, but I think that we reduced the lot size by about 500 square feet in that subdivision compared to this one.
So as I said, think about this, obviously.
Microphone.
Sorry. You know, and this has been one that, you know, we've mulled over because it was on an agenda and it came off an agenda. You know, obviously, the original proposal doesn't match the surrounding area. If it's a Dollar General going in, it doesn't match the surrounding area. You know, we are talking single-family homes here. In other areas of the city, we have approved similar items. And so it's surrounded by homes, single-family homes. So I'm probably going to be the unpopular guy here that I think it does fit because it is single-family. It's a similar land use. Regardless, it's not our job to determine drainage. It's not our job to determine roads. It's not our job to determine whether they're going to rent them or sell them. It's strictly the use of the property, and they're being used as single-family homes. So I do feel, you know, that the land is consistent with that use.
Thank you, Ethan.
That was kind of my question, because I know that the staff said that some of the input, you know, like, but I know that you take applicant's input to give a suggestive motion just to help us, you know, get through the items quickly. But usually, if there is something that is not conforming to what we've done in the past, my sample motion would be the opposite. But it sounded like the planning staff was in support of what the applicant submitted. And I live in West Conway. I get it. But it's a tough decision because I'm listening to Ethan, and I agree with all the bullet points, match the appropriate zoning and land use. I don't know what the Pennington's plan to do or what, but it's kind of out of, so hopefully, there's another step or level that addresses that because we, I usually depend on what you guys say. And I didn't have any questions about this one because it all lined up, so.
I think those were your comments.
But I completely respect the members of our city, and I get it. It makes sense.
Yeah, so I just, maybe some my thoughts there. I completely agree that rental, non-rental, we have no say in that, nor should we. So I agree with Ethan there, but I do think it's our job to look at the land use and how that will impact the surrounding areas, which I think a lot of the concerns we heard are that and not the. Yeah.
The density, because I kept listening to you say that, I was like, okay, I get that. And it probably could be less. I just, I just want us to be consistent in all areas that we take the same stance on density in all areas of town, and we have not done that.
So, again, this is just my thoughts. But PUDs are pursued because there's a unique situation. And so the precedents, there should be no precedents that we've set on previously approved PUDs because this one is unique and has its own complexities, and we heard about a lot of them tonight. You know, I saw in the packet all the other PUDs that have been approved. To me, that's irrelevant. We need to look at this one and the impacts that it has.
And I still have not, and maybe this is a staff, I mean, I still have not gotten the answer why R1, I mean, do y'all feel that way? I still haven't gotten a good answer why it would not have been considered for R1. And I'm still not gotten the answer of how that changes significantly other than the density, which I am concerned about. So.
I have that same question. Maybe we can come back to that. I don't know if Mark, Drew, or Alexander have any comments here, but I do want to come back to that.
Yeah, I'm trying to work this into a question. I don't know that I have it. I have a concern for an understanding that at some point, we are going to run out of affordable housing. And don't hear me say low-income housing. Affordable housing and low-income are not the same thing. And I imagine inventory is very low in anything under 250 right now. And if we say that we're going to continue growing as a city, I do agree with either Mr. Sanders, Mr. Penning. One of them mentioned, like, at some point, it means smaller lot sizes. Now, that, I'm not, I'm not talking about the land use thing here. I'm talking specifically about, we have to consider what's affordable to continue the growth of the city because we want to keep attracting all kinds of people to Conway.
In all areas of town, that's right.
Yes, agreed.
Mark, Alexander?
My comments mirror Adam's. I do not believe this is a good fit for West Conway. I've born and raised in West Conway. I've been in West Conway my whole life. I think that this development will change the overall aesthetic of the area. If you've been out there at all in the last few years, especially during school hours, you can see the infrastructure in the area is not able to support what is currently out there. You go, you add additional 2, 3, 400, 400 car trips a day out there. The danger that that poses to the children at the school is deeply concerning to me. You know, I've been on this commission for, going on two years now. We make a lot of decisions. There's a lot of important decisions that happen up here. Very rarely does the public come out in opposition of an item like this in this size. I don't take that lightly. I don't think any of us on this commission take that lightly. So with that, I'm against this.
Thank you.
I would echo Lori's thoughts. I mean, I think it's a good idea. This is something that would.
Microphone, sorry.
I think this is something that would benefit Conway. I just don't think this is the right area for this type of development.
So maybe we can address this question of R1, because I have marked this in my, did you have another comment? So I don't know if staff can respond to this, but bullet point two says that approximately 50% of those in attendance at the April 27th, 27th meeting, and I think that was 33 people, of which 31 were against, that's 94% of the people were against it, indicated that the development density closer to R1 standard requirements would be more appropriate. So I think, help us reconcile if 94% of the people were against it, but 50% of the people at the second meeting could get more on board with R1, why was that not considered?
So that references, the original proposal had 27, five, I believe it's in the staff report, if I misquote this. It's 27, five plexes and three triplexes. So the reference to the R1 zoning was moving towards that. So it would be moving towards the single-family residential. So what we were presented, a PUD is typically, has a unique circumstance to reduce some of the lot size. In this case, they increased the size of the detention pond area to 1.25 acres. Typically, when they make that type of concession with a PUD, they request a smaller lot for the remaining lots. In its nature, it's still a single-family residential neighborhood and generally conforms to that single-family, similar to R1, but a little bit smaller of lots. It's also worth noting that the, on R1 zoning, it's 6,000 square feet. Those, the 60 by 100 lots, the difference being 55 by 78.
Yeah, which is like 42 something, I have it, 4290.
And that move to R1, though, would also decrease the density considerably from where it is, from where it started.
Madam Chair, it is correct that once you start dedicating right of way, it does start impacting the overall allowed amount of units per acre. So in this case, it's impossible for us to tell without having the street plan shown to us how that would affect it, because there's an endless amount of ways to set up lots within this type, within this type of property. However, you take into consideration the wetlands, you can still reduce the size of that 1.25 acres. The 1.25 acre lot is not set in stone. It's going to be based off of a delineation. So the delineation should determine the, should determine the outline of your wetland, and you can get additional core permits and make changes to those areas as long as it gets approved by the core. So once those changes get made, it has to meet our drainage criteria manual. They have to go through the appropriate permitting. It's impossible for us to tell how many acres of buildable space there would be remaining.
Chris, when they hired you for this job, they didn't tell you that telling the future was going to be part of the job requirement? They didn't tell you that? Lori, does that answer your question somewhat?
Yeah, I mean, it's better, but I still, I guess, when the, when the public left that meeting and they said they would consider R1, and then we're not seeing that. I guess I'm just, I just don't know where the, where the lapse was in that. Or maybe there was a conversation we weren't a part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I think all the questions about R1 are good, and it's certainly, I had the same questions, but the PUD is in front of us. And, you know, R1 wasn't pursued, so.
We're here to talk about the PUD, not the R1.
Yep.
I think it's, I think that's right. I think it's a good discussion to give a little bit of time to because it has been in the over 60 emails that we have received. And I will say, I have reserved my comments for the end, so I don't know if there's anyone else. I think this is three years on the Planning Commission, something like that. It feels like a lot more right now. And in my time, we have not received forever any other thing that we've been asked to consider. If you take all of the emails combined, it does not overcome the number of emails that were received of number of people that are not for this. And I think what makes this city so special is when people can come together and work out their differences, we get something really, really cool and unique. And I just don't think that we are there right now. And so for that reason, for everything that has been said, for density, I too will vote against this. So.
So if we're good, I will, I'm willing to make a motion when you're ready.
Yeah, we, this is where we have to get.
Would you like me to make it so the yes means yes and the no means no?
Yes. Thank.
Okay, so.
I'll make it easy on everybody. So I move to accept the staff recommendation to approve the rezoning request on the basis that it will allow for appropriate use of the property and will not likely impact, negatively impact adjacent property.
I have a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
It needs a second just for us to vote on it.
It does need a second.
I will second it.
I have a motion from Ethan and a second from Drew. I'm going to do a voice vote on this. I'm going to start over here. Somebody's counting for me?
I've got it.
Okay. Yes, both, that'd be great. Okay, Jensen?
And to be clear, no is?
No is no.
No is no.
Okay, gotcha. Just want to make sure. No.
Lori?
No.
Ethan?
Yes.
Letitia? Adam? Mark?
Oh.
Drew?
No.
Alexander?
No.
I too vote no. Somebody give me a count.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no. One abstention, one absence. Is that what you get, Lauren, Beth?
There was a yes, wasn't there?
Sorry, Ethan was the yes.
Okay, yeah. So what are my numbers again, just so we got it out loud?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed. One abstention, one absence, one in favor.
One in favor, okay. With that, the motion fails this evening. I, I do want to thank everybody for the decorum tonight, how efficiently and effectively time was used, and, and, and the conversation around this. We do consider very difficult topics here, and, and thank you for making it go the way that it went. With that, we will move to item 3 in our agenda announcements and additional business. So staff reports or discussion, is there anything from the staff?
Not that I can recall.
Any other items from the commission? I would also like to commend the staff on your work on this. I know that it has been a very difficult and intense 60 days, I think. And so I would like to commend you on your, your work on this and, and for all, for tolerating all of our questions. Thank you. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn this eve. Oh, go ahead.
Just a quick thing. Just, I wanted to further commend the staff on, you guys have been doing a fantastic job. We've noticed a lot more communication. It's been really great. Really, you're making it really easy for us to show up and, and try to do our jobs. So thank you guys for the hard work. You guys rock.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We are adjourned. Have a good night.